Good morning. I'd like to thank you for coming to the Senate Standing Committee on Higher Education Hearing. Today is Monday, October 25, 2001, and the time is 11:10 a.m. This is the first hearing of four on maintaining quality, equity, and affordability in public higher education throughout the pandemic and beyond. The second hearing is this Wednesday, October 27, at Stony Brook University at the Wang Center, and the focus there will be on the State University of New York. The third hearing is for CUNY and will be held on Tuesday, November 16, at York College in Jamaica, and the final hearing will be held on Monday, November 22, in the Legislative Office Building Hearing Room A with the focus on SUNY. I would like to thank the Senate and the Assembly because we're in the Assembly Hearing Room, the folks who came down from Albany, the Assembly staff based at 250 Broadway, for the use of this hearing room and everything else, and to my staff, Nicole Stewart, Counsel to the Committee, Beth LaMountain, and Michael Favilla, my Chief of Staff. I also appreciate your help. I look forward to hearing the testimony. I read it all last night, and I ask that, if possible, you adhere to the five-minute time limit. I have been joined by Senator Lou, whose district literally is interwoven with mine, and we will be joined by other senators later. We'd like to begin with President Carol Mason, President of John Jay College of Criminal Justice. President Mason.
Good morning, and thank you very much, Chairwoman Stavisky and Senator Lou and members of the Senate Committee on Higher Education for giving us this opportunity to tell you about the great work that CUNY and John Jay College of Criminal Justice are doing to support our students through this unprecedented pandemic. The City University of New York is the largest urban university in the country charged with the responsibility of educating over 250,000 students in its community colleges, senior colleges, and professional schools. As we all know, the beginning of 2020, when the COVID-19 pandemic started to impact America significantly, New York City was the epicenter of this crisis. Being both an Hispanic and minority-serving institution, our community at John Jay is acutely and disproportionately felt the effects of this deadly virus. Our college proudly educates first responders, essential workers, and active-duty servicemen and women, many of whom worked tirelessly on the front lines to ensure the safety of our communities. Longstanding inequities in the United States labor market have been exacerbated by the COVID-19 health crisis. We know that the benefits of a four-year college degree, better employment, health, and salaries are critical to the success of our students and the community. CUNY has been very intentional in using the federal stimulus money strategically to support the needs of our students during the pandemic and to keep them enrolled and progressing towards their degrees. From the federal student emergency grants, approximately $236 million has been dispersed directly to CUNY students. An additional $400 million will be awarded to CUNY students over the fall 2021 and spring 2022 semesters. The CUNY Comeback Program is using federal higher education emergency relief funds to clear students' outstanding tuition and fee balances, and it is one of the country's largest student debt forgiveness programs of its kind. To date, CUNY has forgiven nearly $95 million in unpaid tuition and fees for more than 52,000 students. At John Jay, we allocated over $11 million of our federal stimulus money to pay off our students' outstanding tuition and fee balances, keeping 4,400 students enrolled in college. At John Jay, we also raised over $1 million to support the emergency needs of our students, including our undocumented students. This emergency funding allowed us to provide emergency funding to over 1,700 students, which they used to pay rent, utilities, medical expenses, funeral expenses, and to buy groceries. John Jay has been internationally recognized for its reputation for educating diverse and dynamic students, to be fierce advocates for justice. The undergraduate community of approximately 13,000 students is among the most diverse of CUNY's senior colleges. Nearly 75% of our students are from minority backgrounds, 47% are the first in their families to attend college, and more than half are from households earning less than $30,000 a year, and more than half of our students work full or part-time and care for family members. When I arrived at John Jay in August of 2017, our four-year graduation rate was below 25%. We developed a vision for student success at John Jay that became the foundation of our 2020 strategic plan for the college. In our strategic plan, we set a goal of 40% graduation rate by the year 2025. We designed student support programs based on what we've learned from our very successful SEEK and ACE programs. New students are now supported by LEAP, Linking Experience, Academics, and Practice. Because of LEAP, in fall 2020, we retained 86% of freshmen and 70% of our sophomores, and 64% of our sophomores are on track to graduate in four years. Our summer 2021 recovery plan was focused on providing a bridge to the fall for new and continuing students and was crucial for addressing summer melt, retention, and academic momentum lost. Without this creative approach, our four-year graduation rate for 2021 would have been 37%. As a result of our summer 2021 summer academic recovery program, we raised our 2021 graduation rate to 41%. We achieved our 2025 graduation target rate four years early and during the pandemic. The COVID-19 pandemic also exposed the depth of inequities that impact the students we serve at CUNY and John Jay. We also experienced a second national pandemic of racial injustice, resulting in our students demanding that we address these inequities in our curriculum. In my written testimony, I shared with you the seven principles of a culturally responsive, inclusive, and anti-racist curriculum that John Jay created as a community and adopted unanimously. In conclusion, thank you for taking the time to listen to why your support for CUNY is critical to the success of our students, their families, their communities, and our state.
Before we get to the questions, we have been joined by Senator James Goran from Suffolk? Nassau?
Oh.
He straddles both counties. And let me just say that, very briefly, before I call on my colleagues for questions, that we did some remarkable things this year in the state budget, whether it be increasing TAP by $500, trying to close the TAP gap, and we're committed to doing so, whether it be the Opportunity Program increase of 20%. I could go on, but we want to build on that momentum. We want to continue to improve the state's share so that the burden falls less and less on the students. We are, or at least I am, committed to working with the Professional Staff Congress on a CUNY New Deal, and I think things are going to start looking up. Senator Lou, did you?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think they control the mic. All right. No problem. Thank you, Madam Chair, for convening this series of hearings to examine and contemplate what our public universities all throughout the state of New York have been going through, what they've been doing to help our students, and what the plan is for the future. I think it's a very timely topic. As Senator Stavisky mentioned, the legislature made a historic investment in education, a great deal of work leading up to the fulfillment, finally, the fulfillment of a court mandate that requires the state to fund pre-college education, all of our public schools through high school. In the case of Foundation Aid, we finally have a plan to fully fund it. And we also made substantial investments along a number of different lines for public universities. I think that's just the start, and I'd like to undertake even more efforts to really shore up our public university systems and reverse the decades-long trend of disinvestment by the state in our public universities and colleges. So I want to join our chairperson in thanking all of the speakers today, especially the college presidents, as well as the president of the Professional Staff Congress, for your help in helping us together set the course of the future for CUNY as well as the other public universities. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Senator Goran?
Senator Goran? Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank you for this hearing and for a series of hearings that you have scheduled around the state to deal with this critical issue of how we're going to make sure that our public colleges and universities, including SUNY, as well as our community colleges. We have robust community colleges around the state as well. Nassau and Suffolk County each have one, and that's the communities that I represent. And there are numerous challenges that we have to face. We received an influx of money from the federal government, which is very helpful, but we know that that may not necessarily continue at the same level, although we are hopeful that we're going to get some help from Congress perhaps as early as this week. There's a lot of important work for us to do as we address the next state budget, and President Mason, thank you very much, and thank you for the great job that I know you and everybody does at John Jay College. It's a wonderful institution. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Goran. May I start by asking just a couple of random questions? What is the vaccination rate at John Jay, both for the students and for the faculty and staff?
For the students, we have a mandatory vaccine requirement for students taking in-person classes, so all of our students who are in person will be vaccinated unless they have a medical exemption or religious exception. I do not know the specific rate of vaccination for the faculty and staff at this point. We can get that information to you after the hearing.
But if the faculty is going to be teaching in person, presumably they have to be vaccinated.
We are encouraging everyone in the community to be vaccinated. We have a vaccination or mandatory testing policy at this point. Anecdotally, it seems as though our faculty are pretty much vaccinated, though.
What is your impression of how the CUNY system has responded and is handling the -- I know how you're doing it at John Jay, but what's your feeling of how the CUNY central administration has been handling the COVID problem?
I think very well, Madam Chair. An example of that is how CUNY Central helped design a program to help our faculty members who were teaching for the first time online to be able to build their skills to do that. They've also been very creative in how we support our students and how we support keeping them in school, so I have felt very supported through the pandemic from CUNY Central.
Does John Jay provide the PPE equipment to the students or to anybody who asks?
Yes. We have a mandatory masking policy on the campus, and so we provide that for those who don't have it.
How has your enrollment been affected by the pandemic? Have you seen, over the last two years, have you seen a decline, stability, or an increase?
So fortunately, at John Jay, it's been steady. Right before the pandemic, we saw a huge increase, and fortunately for us, we have not -- our numbers have stayed where we ideally want them to be, but we have to work really hard to recruit our students and to make sure that they feel supported, which was one of the goals of our summer retention and summer recovery program. We made sure that all of the incoming new students, whether they were transfers or new students from the K-12 system, that we were equipping them to be successful in this new environment, new learning environment.
Just a couple of more questions. What is the percentage, and I asked this of everybody at every hearing for years, what is your percentage of full-time faculty?
Versus the -- I would say we have about 400 full-time faculty, and we have, we use adjuncts in the range of probably 900 to 1,000 adjunct faculty on a regular basis.
Can you put that into percentage?
I would say, I will check the numbers for you, but based on that math, I would say 33%, a third.
Yeah, no.
But I'm not sure that's accurate. I can confirm that.
Okay. And it can be skewed by other institutions and so on.
And that's just the John Jay number.
At hearings in the past, mental health issues have been brought up by the students, and this year, we put some funding into the budget for mental health services. How have you been handling that at John Jay?
We are very fortunate at John Jay to have a really great mental health team led by Dr. Gerard Bryant, and we used the money, the additional money we've had, to increase the hours and availability of our mental health staff. One of the things that we have found during COVID is that because we're doing more meetings by phone and telephone with the students and Zoom, that the participation rate has increased. We find fewer cancellations in this modality because they're not running to get to campus for the therapy session. We could always, we are always working to improve the resources we have available, but we've been able to extend the hours and look for more part-time therapists to assist us.
And another question I have asked of everybody, what is the rate of remediation for incoming freshmen, approximately?
So we don't do remediation.
Oh, good.
What we do with our students that are coming in, we, again, we use the summer as an opportunity to help equip them to be ready to be students, and we also have something we call the freshman experience to make sure that every one of our incoming freshmen are part of the freshman experience, where they have one small section with a full-time faculty member and a peer advisor to help them acclimate to the higher ed environment. But we have found that that process is very helpful. In the new program that I mentioned, LEAP, that we instituted in 2019, I am convinced that that is what's helped us through COVID, that we had just begun that program to make sure that every one of our incoming freshmen is part of an academic cohort program. So if they're not in SEEK or Honors or ACE or Apple Core, then they're in our LEAP program, and that's a comprehensive advising, and so that we're really assisting the students on a more individualized basis, and we think that's accounted for our success in our retention numbers.
Thank you. Incidentally, Senator Lou chairs the Committee on New York City Education.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, President Mason, for joining us today. I just wanted to get a sense of you as to where the enrollment numbers at John Jay have been these last few years, maybe a little bit before COVID, and then obviously during the two years that COVID has been wreaking havoc in our university system as well as everything else, and what it might look like in the next couple of years.
So our enrollment at John Jay, we've been very fortunate. The class that came in in the fall of 2019 was our largest class, and we were actually oversubscribed and had to really figure out how to resource that. Our ideal incoming freshman class would not be more than 1,900. It would be between 1,700 and 1,900, and during the two years of COVID, our first-year enrollment has held within that range that we ideally want it to be, and our overall enrollment has been steady. We are very fortunate, again, that our track record with transfers is very good. We have, I think we have the highest transfer graduation rate in the CUNY system, around 66%, 67%. And so we are a school that attracts transfers because they know that they'll be successful. So we've been lucky, but I know that it's important for us to focus on enrollment, our pipeline from the high school, as well as our pipeline from the community colleges.
All right. So in the fall of 2019, right before COVID, there was a robust enrollment level?
Correct.
And then what happened the following year and this current year?
It's been where I ideally would like it.
Okay.
In 2019, it was too high.
It was a little bit too high.
Yes.
All right. So now it's right where it should be.
Correct.
And what does it look like for next year and the following year?
According to my, our folks in admissions, we're expecting a continuation of a steady enrollment for us. Again, I think because of who we are and what we represent in terms of the social justice mission, that this is a good time for John Jay, that we are attracting students because of who we are and what we do.
I think you are. I mean, I actually have a couple of your students in my office. Got terrific, terrific interns. We've got Nancy Escobar-Potilla, and we also have Karina Ortiz. They're great students. Want to give them a shout out.
Thank you for that.
And you should keep an eye on them.
I'm writing those names down now.
I hope they don't complain to me now that you've written their names down.
Oh, it's all good.
I asked you about the enrollment numbers because apparently our state budget director has issues with enrollment numbers. He questions why CUNY would need more money if enrollment numbers are declining. Now, I know your responsibility is not for all of CUNY, but you are the first face of CUNY before us, so I'll take the opportunity to ask, well, to ask you to shed a little bit of light on how enrollment affects the finances of John Jay. My understanding is that enrollment fluctuates. You can't predict it exactly, especially when global pandemics are occurring, and yet you don't want to cut back severely on the university's systems because that will have a cascading effect on enrollment in the future, which we certainly would not want. So we've got a situation where the state budget director questions the need for more investment in CUNY as well as SUNY, and yet it doesn't seem like he understands, or he doesn't have the same understanding I have about the impact of enrollment on the college finances. Maybe you can just give us an idea how it affects John Jay?
Well.
If enrollment goes down, how does it affect finances? If enrollment goes up, how does it affect finances?
Well, Senator, I will answer your question this way. I'm not, I know that you'll be hearing from the chancellor and others soon about CUNY specifically and its finances, but I will say that one of the things that I think is important to remember is what CUNY does for the city and for the state in terms of the social mobility of our students and what that does for the economy of New York City and New York State and for our students' families and community. And so I think that a healthy CUNY leads to a healthy New York City and a healthy New York State, and so I hope that everyone continues to invest in our success of our students. When you see the wonderful work, as you do with your interns, that an education at CUNY does for our students and our community, I think it's a powerful story.
I spent a few years at Baruch, and my understanding was that when enrollment went down, it hurt the college's finances because you couldn't, you know, you couldn't and you wouldn't want to fire faculty. You couldn't and you wouldn't just close facilities down. The fixed, CUNY's fixed costs are largely, or CUNY's costs are largely fixed, and yet when enrollment fluctuates, when it declines, it's going to have an adverse impact on the finances. Is that true at John Jay?
So I would say one of the important things to focus on when we look at enrollment is overall enrollment and how important retention is as well. And I think that focusing on how we support our students who are there and supporting their success helps our enrollment and helps our recruitment because when people see the results of what's happening with the CUNY education, that itself draws more students to us. So my focus has been on how do I make sure that I am moving the students we have toward their degree, and I think that is a wonderful enrollment strategy for us.
Okay. Perhaps it's not, perhaps it's not as relevant to John Jay. My question is not as relevant to John Jay because you haven't seen that declining enrollment. I'll ask our next college president, who we'll hear from in a little while, how declining of enrollment affects the finances. I would respond to the budget director's reported comments that it's precisely because of declining enrollments that we need to bolster the finances of CUNY with additional funding wherever we can get it, because we don't want CUNY to start to deteriorate in any way right after we've made historic investments in it because enrollments are down because of a global pandemic. And I will say right now that, I thought this before, and I think it even more based on the reports I've seen last night, that it is an absolute conflict of interest for the state budget director, who was appointed and reports to the governor, to be the budget director, and at the same time, sit on the CUNY Board of Trustees, where he purportedly abstains from budgetary, votes on budgetary matters, and yet opines very publicly and wrongly about his analysis of CUNY's finances. You don't have to answer that. I'll let you off the hook on that. I have another question, which is about the loan forgiveness. So you said in your testimony that John Jay has used the federal funds to essentially forgive all of the outstanding, is it all of the outstanding debt from students, or where is the cutoff?
Well, the federal funds are limited to when we can use them and what semesters we can use them. So basically, it's spring semester 2020, summer 2020, fall 2020, and spring, I'm getting the quarters wrong.
I understand. Basically, from spring of 2020 through?
Through last semester.
Oh, through last semester?
Correct. Through the spring of 2020.
Okay, so for three.
2021. We're in 2021. I forget what year we're in.
Right, so for three semesters.
Counting the summer, it's four.
Okay, counting, all right, summer of 2020, but not summer of 2000.
And?
If you count the summer of 2021, that would be five.
I will have to confirm that, but it's basically four semesters or four that we're covering. We're covering what the federal government allows us to cover.
Okay. And is that for as many students as possible? Is that for all students?
It's for students who, the way it's phrased is students with need, and so all the students who are Pell and TAP eligible by definition are of need, and other students who want to apply for it saying they've got need, there's a process for that as well. But I think that we've been, the system has been very generous in making sure that it's covering the needs of students who want, who need that forgiveness. It's 52,000 students.
Okay. Well, I think I've used up my time. Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you. Incidentally, for the record, I am working on legislation I had introduced many, many years ago, because I too think that somebody who is appointed to the board, whether it be CUNY or SUNY, that person is accountable, should be accountable to the students, not to the person who appoints them. It was wrong, the mayor, previous mayors have done this. I always thought it was wrong, and I hope next year to have the bill ready. If it hasn't gone in already, I don't remember, but we are working on this issue because I totally agree. The difference is that CUNY Board Trustees have term limits of two terms. SUNY does not. Senator Goran?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just getting back to the earlier when we were talking about full-time faculty and adjuncts, based on the Based on the pandemic experience that, you know, everyone had to get through, is there any sort of planning in terms of long range for perhaps more of a mix of in-person classes and, you know, virtually remote, you know, remote professors, particularly adjuncts? Does that impact finances as well?
What we're planning to do for the spring twenty twenty-one semester is to have a much more robust in-person presence for our students and for our community. We want to be more in-person, so we are aiming to have seventy percent of our classes in person, fully in person in the spring of twenty twenty-two.
I guess the question more is, do you see value even after we get out of this horrible crisis, based on circumstances and perhaps a particular adjunct professor, to, you know, adding permanently for some particular classes remote?
So what we're trying to do in the midst of all of this is evaluate and assess what have we learned during the COVID in terms of how we operate and how we educate, and whether there are opportunities to better facilitate learning using a combination of a remote and in-person environment. And we are still examining the data from that. For example, we all have, not all of us, but we have space constraints, so we're examining and looking at whether or not it, it, it makes better sense to have large lectures be done remotely and then have small conversation sections for that class. So we're trying to look at the data and look at the information and figure out how do we take the best of what we learned through COVID to increase the, the, the learning opportunities for our students.
Okay. I mean, I do believe in-person is better, but I'm, I'm just curious as to whether across our whole system, there may be some real benefits in the future to creatively looking at how we can, you know, offer additional opportunities for students, perhaps maybe even courses that, you know, we can, can no longer provide or have never provided in persons. But thank you very much, President Mason.
Okay, well, we thank you for coming today. And hopefully at the budget hearing, we will be able to resolve some of these issues.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
The next person is Dr. James Davis. And let me congratulate you on your election as president or director of the Professional Staff Congress.
Thank you.
We thank your predecessor for many years of service and I know that, in fact, it was two years ago today that I held the first hearing of the Higher Ed Committee, which I had just become chair, at Brooklyn College, which is where I think we, I know you teach, you taught there, but we're back here two days-
That may be where we first met.
Two years to the day. Dr. Davis.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Savisky and committee members for the invitation to speak with you today. James Davis, Brooklyn College faculty member, president of Professional Staff Congress, the union representing thirty thousand faculty and professional staff at CUNY. The subject of today's hearing aligns with the mission to which CUNY PSC members have dedicated their careers, providing quality public higher education to the whole people of New York City. The pandemic severely impacted CUNY students, PSC members, and our communities. We know of fifty-seven members of the CUNY community who have died due to COVID. One out of every seven people in the ZIP code surrounding Queens College has been diagnosed with the virus. One out of every three hundred and twenty-two there has died. The numbers are worse elsewhere. In Jamaica, Queens, the neighborhood surrounding York College, where you'll be hearing testimony on November sixteenth, one out of every seven people has been diagnosed with COVID, one out of every two hundred and fourteen has died. CUNY students had to pivot abruptly to remote learning. They lost face-to-face interaction with professors, peers, and many of the support services that helped them stay on track to graduation. For our members, these difficult times were exacerbated when CUNY laid off approximately twenty-eight hundred adjunct teaching faculty. Attrition has also led to the loss of more than five hundred full-time faculty and staff in the past eighteen months. All too often, the remaining instructors faced larger rosters in their online classes. Problematic results since remote instruction benefits generally from smaller class size. CUNY had a shortage of advisors and counselors before COVID, but the need has increased during the pandemic as students face dire circumstances. The pressures of balancing their work and their studies, the first-generation college experience of poverty and institutional racism have all been compounded by unemployment, illness, and the loss of friends and family. We should recall that over half of CUNY students have an annual household income of less than thirty thousand dollars. Our CUNY community, students, faculty, and staff is still reeling from this trauma, and this continued, this committee's continued support is critical to ensuring the health and safety of all our CUNY workspaces and classrooms. We need a new deal for CUNY that can finally end the racial and educational inequities that were laid bare during the pandemic. When I say something about health and safety, the Professional Staff Congress trained more than two hundred members to conduct safety walkthroughs of CUNY buildings with the administration. We built the power to ensure that many unsafe facilities were either remediated or taken offline and that CUNY's safety protocols were improved. However, health and safety concerns remain. On October eighteenth, the university provost reiterated the administration's target for seventy percent of classes to meet in person in the spring term, and a mandate that all full-time faculty teach at least one course in person. Now, of course, many of the professional staff have been working on campus all through fall semester, and many faculty are eager to return to the classrooms. But a safe return to more in-person learning and work must be informed by current data, not by arbitrary benchmarks. The state legislature has an oversight role in the university's use of funds and its protocols for opening the campuses. You can help keep CUNY accountable on the federal stimulus expenditures and intercede, as you have, you and your colleagues, to make sure CUNY does the right thing. Even now, ten CUNY colleges have refused to provide the Professional Staff Congress with data we've requested about building ventilation, information to which we believe we are entitled. Six colleges have denied our requests, four have not responded. So we need your help obtaining the data to confirm our workplace safety as the pandemic continues. We feel it's outrageous that colleges declined or ignored our requests, and it undermines our members' confidence in their administrations. Let me say something about the CUNY budget. CUNY has finally requested a budget worthy of its mission, and it doesn't include a tuition hike. The ambitious request for an addition, additional four hundred and sixteen million dollars over last year's enacted budget includes funding for several priorities in the new deal for CUNY bill, including one thousand seventy-five new full-time faculty lines, opportunities for full-time conversion appointments for adjunct faculty, and additional full-time mental health counselors. We're grateful, Chair Savisky and colleagues, for your cosponsorship of the new deal for CUNY, legislation introduced last year that helped to shape CUNY's budget request this year. It's essential to begin reversing the decades-long disinvestment at CUNY. I want to highlight a few key areas of CUNY's budget request, and I won't dilate on them because they're in the written testimony that we submitted. One piece, more full-time faculty. Since the nineteen seventies, the number of full-time faculty per student has decreased dramatically at CUNY. Today, there are more than four thousand fewer full-time faculty than in nineteen seventy-five, when there were twenty-four thousand fewer students enrolled at CUNY. So we need to replenish the full-time faculty ranks and diversify the faculty in the process. And we need to end CUNY's over-reliance on underpaid adjuncts by creating conversion lines to full appointment, full-time appointment. Second piece, academic advisors and mental health counselors. The student-to-adviser ratios at CUNY were as high as fifteen hundred to one at some colleges before the pandemic, and the ratio of students to mental health counselors was twenty-four hundred to one. Now, counselors do their best under intense workload, pressure, and students still report that the wait times to see a counselor can be weeks. The legislature allocated a million dollars for mental health services in the last budget. We're very grateful for that investment. But CUNY requested six million last year for the state for mental health services, and the need truly is great. So federal pandemic funds have been used to lift some of the burden by hiring part-time counselors, but those funds, of course, are temporary. Community colleges, enrollment has been stated. Community colleges has declined due to COVID, but these institutions will be critical to the state's economic recovery, as they have been after every recession. So we urge you to continue your commitment to the community colleges and the students they serve by supporting the full three hundred dollar per FTE request that CUNY has made. And then the last piece in the CUNY budget I want to highlight are the capital improvements. It's very well-known by anyone who's visited CUNY campus that CUNY is really in the midst of an infrastructure crisis that well predates COVID. Let's say a word about expanding affordability and quality at CUNY. I want to thank the state legislature for last year's commitment to closing the TAP gap, as Chair Savisky indicated, by twenty twenty-five. So by indicate, by increasing the maximum TAP award by five hundred dollars, the legislature reduced the TAP gap by about thirty percent, and it's critical that New York State follow through on that commitment and eliminate the remaining TAP gap. We also applaud the CUNY comeback program that President Mason referred to. Very smart use of one-time federal stimulus funds, supports students who otherwise wouldn't be able to register for classes because of small debts to the colleges. While student debt relief is at the forefront of the national discussion about education policy, the need to reevaluate tuition is equally evident at the federal level, where free community college featured in President Biden's America's College Promise, but is unlikely now to survive the reconciliation process. Free public community college should become a reality, but New York State can become a leader nationally on its own by fully supporting those seeking even a four-year degree at a public institution in New York City, a centerpiece of the new deal for CUNY. And tuition is just one piece of the puzzle. As students and the PSC had advocated in recent years, it's equally important to remove obstacles to academic progress, such as the cost for books, reliable internet, and even food. I want to end with some comments about CUNY as a statewide engine of economic mobility, and President Mason referenced this earlier. Expanding affordability helps students and their families, and also, of course, improves graduation rates. Getting students quality academic degrees and good jobs is an essential step to move New York beyond the pandemic's devastating impact on many communities. Last year, New York City Comptroller Stringer's office released a report confirming the strong return on investment that CUNY students have on the state's economy and the tax base. Just a couple of figures. CUNY graduates working in New York State earned a combined fifty-seven billion dollars annually in twenty nineteen. That's twenty-eight point six billion dollars more than students would have earned without a post-secondary degree. CUNY graduates working in New York paid an estimated four point two billion dollars in state income taxes in twenty nineteen. So CUNY students and the PSC members who support their academic goals are the economic lifeblood of New York communities. The pandemic obviously brought havoc to so many lives. The federal government provided one-time emergency aid to keep the university and the state afloat, but that aid will run out in two years. It's intended to sustain our underfunded public university and protect health and safety through the pandemic. The university's budget request is in advance in this new political moment that if it's fully funded, can restore CUNY's vitality and set us on a path toward a new deal for CUNY. Thank you again for the opportunity to address you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. You took over at just the right time, I must tell you. Your timing is impeccable, because there was so many years of neglect, going back to the two thousand eight budget cuts. Let me ask you a couple of questions. I, I asked President Mason, and I ask you, how would you grade the CUNY response to reopening and to the handling of the pandemic and the post-pandemic period?
Well, I mean, let me start by acknowledging that it's a really difficult time to be a university administrator anywhere. Maybe nowhere more than in New York City. So I don't envy that role. I, I think I disagree a bit with President Mason's characterization, because from our perspective, it was very difficult for faculty and staff, and I won't speak on behalf of students, but I can only imagine for them, to try to navigate the transition into the beginning of the semester. What we received was a lot of, a series of guidance that was difficult to reconcile with one another. And I think part of the issue was that the CUNY administration was proceeding on the assumption that the way to maintain or increase enrollment was to provide more in-person classes. And I think we all felt early in the summer that everything was trending in a positive direction, and then when the Delta variant hit, it was very difficult, I think for any of us, but especially, I think, for the CUNY administration to pivot and to recognize what was coming. So what we found was that they were very eager to return our staff by August second into classes, but hadn't conducted safety walkthroughs to ensure that the staff would be safe in returning to work. And so that deadline got bumped back for a couple of weeks. They wanted to bring students back into the classroom, understandably so, but didn't, that didn't mandate the vaccine until the FDA had approved it for non-emergency authorization. So that meant that the students that our in-person faculty and staff were interacting with start of the semester was a mixed population, of vaccinated and unvaccinated students in person up through October seventh, when they finally, you know, had the vaccines. So the, and the other, and I mentioned this in my testimony, the other area that's been really challenging for, for us, I want to, you know, give a lot of credit to the university for being willing to work collaboratively with us on conducting walkthroughs of the facilities. Unfortunately now, as we've tried to drill down and ask for additional information on specific campuses about ventilation, which as you all know, in an airborne virus situation is the critical component, we've really been blocked in getting that ventilation information. And we don't think it's an unreasonable request. The reports that we received about the safety of campus facilities were very high-level reports. They, they didn't include much detail. They came from an engineering firm that the university contracted. They said which buildings had been cleared for, for use, for teaching. But we don't know, you know, for example, what the ventilation at Hunter North Hall is, for instance. We don't really know what the ventilation is at the Medgar Evers campuses, and we, we need to know building-level data there. I'll stop.
Yeah, okay, no, you and I had spoken about that, and I had contacted the administration on those particular issues, particularly the Hunter College, that classroom with hundreds of people, ventilation issues at a number of the institutions, and we will follow up. But originally, which I think predates your election, there were complaints that you were not consulted. And I'm happy to hear you say that at least you are involved to some extent.
Yeah.
My second question concerns the full-time faculty issue. For your, the PSC's fiscal twenty twenty-three, budget requ, twenty-two, rather, budget request, or I guess it's twenty-three, I saw that CUNY had lost over five hundred full-time faculty and staff over the last two years. Is that correct?
Faculty and staff, and I'm sorry, I don't have the breakdown between the groups, but yes.
Where, do you have any idea where these losses occurred? Were there any either subject areas or geographic?
No, it's an important question, but I'm afraid I don't know whether it's localized in specific fields or colleges. I don't know offhand. I'd be interested to know what's behind your question, though.
We want to make sure that if, if adjuncts are laid off, that it's fair.
Well, these are full-time, these are full-time, just to be clear.
And full-time, and whether it's in accordance with the contract that you have.
Yes.
Just a couple more. What are, what is the current, if you have it, the full-time faculty? What is the current, if you have it, the full-time faculty and numbers? Do you have those numbers?
I believe the number of full-time faculty now is between 6,000 and 7,000. I don't have the exact number in front of me, but I think we dipped below 7,000 recently. And I would just place that in the context of also, we have somewhere between 11,000 and 12,000 adjunct faculty across the university and about 5,000 or 6,000 higher education officers. We represent a few other titles, but that can give you a sense.
Familiar with the higher education officers. They had a contract issue. Lastly, the CUNY New Deal has a really high price tag. If you were to pick one part of it, if Santa Claus said to you, what would you put, what should I put on my list? What would you pick?
I'm not going to do that right here in front of you. We'll do that in negotiations. The CUNY New Deal has a large price tag. It's true. I would flip that around and say, really, can we afford not to do the things on that New Deal? I mean, these are, it's a five-year plan, so it's a phase-in plan. And I think it's predicated on seeing the kind of change in the state broadly that I know all of you on the committee are interested in seeing, too. So the price tag seems high. The cost that's been paid by CUNY students over the past decade since the recession has been enormous. So I think we could really see a transformed university.
Thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just.
I appreciate the question.
Okay, I have no further questions. Senator Lou, do you have a question?
Yeah, if tomorrow's Christmas, what would you wish for? I'm just kidding. I know, we're not going to put you on the spot. I don't have questions because your testimony was comprehensive and covered a lot of the areas. I just want to congratulate you on taking the helm at the Professional Staff Congress. There's a lot of work to do, and I know that I share my chairperson's sentiments that we want to work together and rebuild CUNY to what it should be. The additional budget request, as far as I can see it, it's a restoration of funds that should have been there a long time ago, not actually a new budget request. And I want to give a shout out to your predecessor, Barbara Bowen, who was really phenomenal in her years of leadership, both for the PSC as well as CUNY itself.
Thank you. Thank you for your advocacy.
Senator Goran?
Thank you. Well, I do just want to congratulate you and looking forward to partnering with you moving forward. And again, you know, I appreciate everything you said. I really don't have any questions other than I'm glad, Madam Chair, that we're going to be following up on this ventilation issue because that is really troubling, that you have asked for basic information that just any employee, any student, you know, should have the absolute right to receive.
Thank you.
Particularly during COVID. And, you know, once we hopefully get past COVID, there are always going to be other ventilation issues, particularly in older buildings. So, you know, I will, you know, work with you on that, Madam Chair, to make sure that we get to the bottom of getting this information. Thank you for what you're doing.
On the ventilation issue, have you made the request to the Office of Facilities Planning on improvements to the ventilation? Are you aware of any requests being made?
Yes, we have. And we also submitted to the specific, 10 colleges, we submitted requests based on OSHA regulations that we would have access to that. But so far, those have either been denied or ignored.
Because we do have Dr. Atala here from the Construction Fund, and we will ask him that question.
He and I know one another.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Done a lot of Zooms together. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Professor? Next, we have Dr. Daisy Coco de Filippis, president of Ostos Community College in the Bronx.
My apologies, I had a little injury I felt, so I'm a little sore.
Sorry.
So there's a little support just because there's no handle on this chair.
Okay.
All right, that's fine.
Chairs.
Okay. Is there a better chair?
I'm fine, thank you.
No. Okay.
Would you like me to begin?
Madam Chair, should she begin?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I didn't know, I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
Okay. Dear Chair Savisky and members of the committee, I am Dr. Daisy Coco de Filippis, president of Ostos Community College located in the South Bronx. First, let me thank you for inviting me to testify at today's hearing. The future of Ostos, of CUNY and CUNY's community colleges is of the utmost importance to me, as I know it is to the governor and to this committee. I know I am among friends and allies as I deliver the following remarks about Ostos. A colleague once told me that pedagogy is about love. You have to love what you teach. To teach in the South Bronx is very much a labor of love. The history of Ostos is the history of poor Latino and other minority communities struggling for higher education and social mobility. Ostos takes great pride in being inclusive of everyone. It is an immigrant college with a student population that is 58% Hispanic, 36% Black, and approximately 2/3 Female. We also have a very diverse faculty, a 58% diversity among the faculty, and our staff is 85% diverse. A total of 86% of students graduate debt-free because of significant support from the state and Ostos' support helping navigate students through the financial landscape of paying for college. 49% are first in their family to attend college. 77% come from households with an annual income of $30,000 or less, and 90% receive financial aid. We also have a number of in-house scholarships available for our DACA students who are not eligible for federal financial aid. As this data illustrates, a typical Ostos student is a young woman of color, likely the first in her family to attend college and needs financial aid to afford college. These are our students, your constituents, and the people we serve. As for CUNY overall, a survey of students found that during the height of the pandemic, 46% of CUNY students experienced food insecurity, 57% housing insecurity, and 40% actually experienced homelessness. I want to take a moment to tell you how Ostos Community College helped our students experiencing food insecurity, which had always been an issue for Ostos students back at worst during the pandemic. We kept the Ostos food pantry open throughout, and at the height of the pandemic, it was open five days a week, giving students grocery bags to take home dozens of meals every day. The pantry made appointments for COVID-safe, non-contact food pickups with 2,915 students from March of 2020 through the height of the pandemic. And because students got to take home meals, not just for themselves, but for family members to last for one or more days, the number of meals served measured somewhere in the tens of thousands. Through all of this, the hardship and headaches caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, I am pleased to report that also had 1,225 students graduating for the 2021 academic year. This reflects the hard work and dedication of the Ostos community in reaching out to students to keep them engaged. The short-term mental health counseling and on-campus student support services we offer, the learner devices distributed to students to make transition to online learning, and the financial support we receive from the state, city, and federal governments. It is no secret that enrollment has been done at community college as a result of COVID-19 everywhere across the nation, including Ostos. I am grateful that, for the most part, our continuing students have stayed with us. These are students who were already invested in their education and engaged with the college prior to the start of the pandemic, but enrollment of freshman students has been diminished. The pandemic has created a multitude of reasons why a community college-bound student might put their education on hold: the need to work, family responsibilities, the challenges of online learning, to name a few. It is therefore more important than ever that we put out a positive message that we are able to meet the new and challenging needs of our students. The economy is slowly rebounding. More and more people are getting vaccinated, which means that we can expect to see job growth and increased economic activity in the coming years. I am very optimistic about that. Although enrollment has dipped because of the pandemic, enrollment at Ostos was steadily trending upwards for years prior to 2020. We must be ready to meet increased demand as enrollment rises to pre-pandemic levels. Emerging from the pandemic, we have strong programs in healthcare professions, engineering, and other STEM fields. These are professions that were projected to be major employment growth sectors even before COVID-19. The Bronx is home to four major hospitals, and those, there are many job opportunities for our graduates of allied health programs. Ostos also plays as a priority, and training students in STEM fields as does CUNY, because these are the fields where the well-paying jobs of tomorrow will be found. Additionally, our students come from the community, and when they graduate, they stay and use the skills and education they've received at Ostos in our community. Education is the key to success and socioeconomic mobility. Young people need to be trained to compete in New York City, in a New York City market that is not just regional economic center, but also a global city. To succeed in this new world, they need education. The students at Ostos leave with the knowledge and job skills needed to pursue careers that would otherwise not be open to them or to go onto a four-year program if they so choose. I thank the committee for its time, and I will answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are you able to answer questions?
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry about your accident.
It was, let me tell you something, I'm very resilient, but I'm going to be bruised for a couple of months, so I'm moving a little slower, which is good. It teaches me patience besides. And thank you for yours.
Let me just ask you a number of questions. You mentioned that Ostos students, or at least the administration, is weathering the decline in enrollment in numbers. What would you guess? Because I know this is a nationwide problem, not limited to New York City or state.
I think within the construct of community colleges, we're sort of in the middle. So at Ostos, it's about 10% decline.
What percent?
10.
Yeah, that is.
About, not precisely, you know, but more or less. But the thing is, in terms of weathering, you know, there's been the support from the federal government, from the state to help us as well. And the colleges have done really well in terms of the number of community advocates and supporters we have. So for example, our goals for the foundation for this past year to fundraise, we exceeded that by about 20%. All that money went to help the students in multiple ways. We also, and some of the dollars that came in from private foundations could be used to help the students who are DACA, who couldn't fill out a federal form. And I thank New York for recognizing the DACA. So that's one thing. We just had the golf outing just now, and we have projected a number which will more than double, and it was an amazing thing for folks that wouldn't even participate, who just sent checks to help because they know the value of Ostos in the community. And I don't know if you're aware that Ostos was also recognized by the Mackenzie Scott with one of her gifts, and that's going to help promote some of the good work of the faculty and also support the students in many ways, retention and intentionality in terms of internships and other things. So I'm very encouraged by that.
Yes, and I'm encouraged. I believe the CUNY Construction Fund approved a program in another building, a big chunk of money, and it demonstrates, I think, the confidence that we have.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I serve on the CUNY Construction Fund, as our vice chancellor knows. In the budget, we put in a floor for community colleges that they should receive 98% of their previous allocation to try to cover the issue of the decline in enrollment. How has that affected Ostos?
It has been really helpful, thank you. It has, I think, your contributions, the state was actually really supportive of us, and I thank you. I know Senator, we've met, and Senator Lou, we've met, and I really appreciate, we were very, very pleased with the state.
No, the Senate and Assembly were able to negotiate that. Plus the $50 FT, full-time equivalent.
That's correct. And the top increase, fantastic, yes, yes, for the students.
Have you noticed any additional needs for remediation? This is a question I ask all the time. Because I think frankly, higher education institutions should not have to pay for remediation. But have you noticed an increase in the cost of remediation?
I think what happens with remediation, we don't have remediation in that sense at Ostos anymore. What we have is that we have a module supplemental instruction to some of the courses in math and English to help the students who need to catch up in some way, and that has proven very, very helpful, in particular, you know, in the English area. But they are making strides as well in math. We have good faculty there.
I know you have a division of continuing education and workforce development. Can you speak briefly about the successes that you've had with those programs?
Yes, I think, I think the non-credit side, the workforce and the non-credit is a great pipeline also into the workforce, but also for students who didn't really see themselves as college material and so on. And keep in mind, I was the provost at Ostos from 2002 to 2008. And I was part of the team that built the workforce area at Ostos at that time with the help of John McAleskey, who has since retired from CUNY this past summer, a wonderful, at that time, university dean for workforce. And so we began to really understand reaching out, meeting people. There's a lot that I do to meet, the college does, to meet with partners and to hear what they need and to offer. I think you need to be really flexible with the non-credit side, meaning you respond to a need and you have, you can offer a course, not only following the semester sequence, but it could be offered at different intervals in the year, responding to the need of industry. We also have at Ostos a community advisory council that is made up of businessmen, heads of hospitals, educators, everyone who actually, you know, they're helping us to connect with different companies to create more opportunity. At Ostos, I thought I had done a great job, and then I left to be president somewhere else and came back and saw that it had continued to thrive, and it does well in working with industry and working with public sectors. They also offer, which is really, makes me very, very proud, with some grants from the state. They offer free of charge some opportunities for the community to get entry-level certificates in workforce in some of those areas that are needed, and also in ESL and other areas. So I think the college understands that if you're in the South Bronx, workforce, credit or non-credit really matter. So our workforce programs are very strong, and I want to just brag a little bit and say that our engineering programs, in fact, this week, they're being recognized, they were recognized nationally for creating opportunities for women and minorities to enter the engineering field. enter the engineering field. So they were recognized two weeks ago, and they're being honored, I think it's this Thursday, one of the activities of the HACU conference. So workforce is doing well, credit and non-credit. And they are now also have, I believe, six or nine, don't quote me on the number, programs that actually transition, that there are ways to evaluate some of the work so that the non-credit folks who want to continue their education can move to the other side, to the credit side, and take those credits with them and use them towards their associate's degree.
Thank you. Senator Goran, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, thank you very much for what you're coming and what you do for all the students. My question is, obviously, you have some great programs for students to go into the workforce directly, and you work closely with employers in the area. Do you know what percent of your students go, continue towards a four-year degree?
I would have to look that up precisely, but I would say more than 50% continue. And they do well. The one thing you will see that at CUNY senior colleges, at any time you look at commencement, and I'm just not bragging, but overall, it was the same when I was in Connecticut, there's a good number, more than, more than half of those students who are getting their bachelor degrees began at a community college.
Do you think there might be some students who might choose to go for four-year degrees but opt not to because of financial constraints?
This is what we're, you know, this is part of what we, part of what we want to begin doing with this Mackenzie Scott money for the students is precisely for that. So, for example, we're in conversations right now with Columbia University and a pathway from the associates to a master's in public health, and they will find some funding for that, and we will find the funding to help the students be able to concentrate. And I think that with all our luck, it will begin either in the spring or the fall of 2022, because they are seeking funds as well. But we've been in multiple meetings with both the heads of the Columbia General Studies, which will be the first transfer from us to General Studies, and then from there to the Postman School of Public Health.
Thank you very much. That's terrific.
Senator Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Coco de Filippis, for joining us, and thank you for inviting me to the September 11th commemoration last month. That was very meaningful.
Thank you.
And I see you're joining, but, what's that?
Thank you for honoring us.
Well, thank you for including me. I see you have among your team one of my former star students sitting right there, so kudos to you for having a great team.
Diana? Oh, goodness, you know how to pick them. She's my chief of staff.
Well, then, then I believe you are well-served.
Okay.
I have a question about your enrollment numbers. You know, we have long had conventional wisdom that, and this is based on past economic downturns. When, when the economy goes south and people potentially lose their jobs, they often use that opportunity as a way to, as a, they use that as an opportunity to bolster their skills and education and community colleges' enrollment increases. And in fact, last year in Albany, when we held budget hearings, I recall that some of the testimony was that people were, this was in 2020, that people were enrolling in community colleges because, because that's what people traditionally have done when they lost work opportunities. Has that not been the case at Hostos as a community college?
The continuing students are continuing, the new, the new students, that's what the attrition.
The freshmen. You had cited in your testimony, the freshman class is thin.
Because, because what they do is they choose to postpone for this reason. When there has been unemployment, we're talking about a pandemic. We're talking about nothing that I, in my lifetime, experienced. Certainly, some of these people. I'm talking about really being scared for your life, knowing that even if you get on a, or thinking that if you get on the subway and the bus, certainly the first two semesters of that, there were no vaccinations. That, so that's, that is correct. But I want to tell you something, that I do have some examples to quote. So, for example, our student government president, I won't mention his name because I don't know if I'm permitted, you know, for his privacy, but he was, he was a displaced worker, he was laid off, he was a porter, and he decided, while he was receiving his unemployment, he'd come back to school and learn a new profession. So he is studying to become a radiologic technology expert, which will give him immediate access to a position when he completes. He's very thoughtful. He's not, you're, also our students, by the way, at Ostos, many are not as young as you would, you find in other community colleges. The average age is about 27, 28. Many, many, for example, we do have a program there to help mothers, single mothers who are coming back funded by the state. This is one of the pilots that help us, help the students find multiple ways. So we are trying to identify, you know, and there was considerable mistrust about the vaccines, so conversations, for example, this particular student, because I meet with the students regularly, I, I'm very proud to say he's got two vaccinations, because that mother over here kept just talking. And that, so I think we, all of us in some way influence our students into.
I mean, I think that's, those are great examples, and I applaud your efforts. The fact remains, though, that freshman enrollment is down. And, you know, my question is similar to the question that I asked of our earlier college president, which is, when the enrollment declines, does it have an adverse impact on Hostos' finances?
Well, because of the, for these two years, because of the influx of money, you know, no. Also because our budget at the community colleges, at least, a certain formula for the senior colleges and other, and other, other CUNY institutions, is a three-year weighted average of your FTEs, which is your full-time equivalent. We will see the real impact coming up by 2023 if we don't pick up enrollment now, 22, 22, 23. You understand? That's going to be when you, when you, when you, when you're going to, we're going to have a significant impact. And as I said, the college has been fortunate to be able to compensate a lot of support in, also had a very strong, the college had a very strong foundation in regard to the number of faculty and staff that we had. For example, 25 student advisor coaches.
Okay, so in a couple of years.
That was there, yeah.
In a couple of years, presumably after the current federal assistant, assistance disappears, that if the enrollment does not pick up, as you mentioned, then there will be some financial shortfalls that need to be made up.
My dear Senator Lou, I am really going to do my, we are all going to do our absolute best so that it does pick up. And part of it is, we have some really fabulous programs at the school, the digital game design, for example, cybersecurity that we're processing, working on, and number, we're talking to multiple people to create opportunities, companies and so on. So it is my hope, it is my absolute hope, and I'm not just hoping, sitting down and hoping. We're really working.
Dr. Coco de Filippis, I certainly do not mean to suggest that you need to.
No, I can see that.
Put more effort into increasing those enrollment numbers. Those enrollment, enrollment numbers are down through, because of nothing that you did or did not do. There's a global pandemic, and that has affected everybody.
But enrollment.
I'm just giving you an opportunity to say, well, you're going to need more money. But I'm not hearing it, so.
I know that we're going to need more money, and I know.
Madam Chair.
And I know.
The president has said it.
I know that we will be, that I, let me just say, I know that the chancellor has put out a proposal for CUNY that is supportive. I know there are other conversations and other proposals. And I also know that if there's one, that you're looking at an immigrant, right, that is completely 100% educated by CUNY. And you know what? I never paid a penny. Actually, I had to pay $28 for student activity fee, which I used to say, what? I'm a young mother. I really, where am I going to get this $28? Because CUNY at that time, when I went, was tuition-free if you maintained a B average.
So, so you're going to need more money if those enrollment numbers don't pick up? And when the state budget director talks about the fact that, well, why do you need more money when the enrollment is down? That's just a sheer lack of understanding of.
Well, as my colleague, President Mason, indicated, part of what you need, a big part, some of it, I mean, if we, all we did was bring new enrollment, we also have to retain the students that are there. And those services, in many, many ways, what is happening, for example, with community colleges and public higher education, is that we have become a sort of social services. We work on getting, there was no such thing as a food pantry when I was, you know, many years back. And we now all have, or most of us throughout the country now, you know, have the food pantries, have to worry about multiple ways to help the students, because we understand that when you have a student in the class, you don't only have a mind, you also have a person who has to survive living in society, especially someone who may not have the resources. They don't go home to their own private room. They are ashamed sometimes to get on the Zoom meetings and classes because they don't want people to hear the noise in their surroundings or to see their surroundings because they're poor, if they have the Wi-Fi. So we have been supporting the Wi-Fi, the devices, and they multiply food, and we try to get them to, as it was explained, at Ostos, there were 2,400 students who actually benefit for that, from the policy of the chancellor, that this money be used to pay off whatever balances the students had, going back to spring 2020 for four semesters for unpaid tuition so that they could register to continue.
Madam Chair, if I may, just one final question. Thank you for indulging me. My last question is somewhat, on a somewhat different topic. President Biden has made efforts to really support community college education throughout the country, and he's trying to back that up with real dollars. Is there any sense from the community college that you lead, what kind of impact the president's proposal would have on Hostos if it passed?
Already, our students, as I indicated, are 90% on financial aid. The fact that.
Of 90% are what?
Are receiving financial aid of our students. We deal with some of the poor students that will be in any of your areas, okay? But there's a 10% of students. And you're talking about a middle class that is really struggling to stay afloat and having access to free community college. It would actually allow the middle class to catch their breath, send their kids to do the first two years at a community college and then move on to continue so that they could pay them for grad school if they had to.
So if the president's efforts would help those 10% of students who are not receiving financial aid.
Well, I would say they would have to, what they need to do is increase what the students are currently receiving. There was also a movement, I know because there was going to be an announcement made, and then the weather didn't permit it, at our college for a couple of our federal elected officials, about looking at SNAP. And SNAP, those recipients of SNAP now are obliged to work, but for college students, they are requesting that they be used, their studies be used as work so that they could use the time to actually study and not have to run to go to work in three different places.
But the president's proposal, from the student's perspective, that certainly would help their students, whether they were currently paying tuition or whether they have to use money for other vital expenses.
Yeah.
From Hostos' point of view, it would, it would be more than just helping the 10% with their tuition, right? It would perhaps free up some, some funds that are currently being used to help students with their.
Correct, correct, exactly. I'm sorry.
So what, what kind of ideas, if the president's proposal passed, what, what's one or two changes that could happen at Hostos that would raise the caliber of what the community colleges are able to provide?
I think for us, first of all, it is a sense, it is a sense, for many students, there are instances that students, some students, may not have the, well, I'm not going to get into the particulars, but may not, I think, I think it would make life easier for everyone. Number one, just you try. I had a PhD friend of mine call me and said, Daisy, my children are going to school, I need to file the FAFSA. He says, a PhD. I said, frankly, you have a PhD. It's so complicated and so convoluted, and they put multiple things through review. Just not having to go through that process of all that paperwork. Because what you do with that is, number one, there's a detriment in terms of people, you really have to be determined sometimes to, that you really want to go to college to get through the paperwork that you have to get through. And the college helps, and the college goes, but they get discouraged, the parents can find whatever papers, or they can't have whatever. It's a very trying, and they choose. If you, if you're not really careful, one little number or something sends it all for review, and you have to wait, and wait is really burdensome. It's a very burdensome process, just that. So just in terms of making it really accessible, number two, nobody to worry. Number three, who knows? I mean, there may not be 90%. There may be 80% or 70% in the future. So I think every community college has poor students. If they receive Pell, they're getting some support, but it's a support that comes through a lot of trial. It's, I mean, you try doing one of those. Try to just do that application.
No, I'm very familiar with that application. It takes, it literally takes five years off your life.
I have to tell you, literally, I have to tell you that I went tuition-free to Queens College. All I have to do was show my high school transcript.
Yeah.
That's all I have to do.
Thank you for your efforts. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Thank you. And getting back to the decline in enrollment, the 98%, sort of it's a whole harmless concept, that may not be there next year. You know, it's negotiated each year in the budget. I did discuss this issue some months ago, the decline in enrollment, and I offered a suggestion to the chancellor. I just had a feeling this was going to come up. You don't have to be a genius to know that, as we said, in times of economic distress, people will retool, will go to a community college. And I think that's particularly significant in New York City and elsewhere in the state. But the money may not be there, we don't know. Each year, it's a different year and a different year to negotiate, and we're going to be there fighting for an increase, without a doubt. So I thank you for what you're doing at Hostos, and we appreciate your coming today.
You can be sure that it will do what we are doing, working really hard to encourage families to come back and to, and to make everything. They do need the students, because they tell me they need to be, for us to have more of a presence on campus so that they can feel comfortable and use all of the services. And I think that is what is planned for CUNY, about 70% in person, and that, that should increase enrollment, I'm very sure of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, Senator.
Our last person is somebody relatively new, but has really done a terrific job, Dr. Mohammed Atallah. He's the vice chancellor for facilities, planning, construction, and management at CUNY, and also the executive director of the SUNY Construction, the CUNY Construction Fund, and for the record. And for the record, I do serve as one of the trustees. And I thank you really for all of the responses to the questions that I have asked in preparation for those meetings.
Thank you very much. Will it be okay, agreeable, if I testify without a mask?
Yeah, fine with me too. You're six feet, fully vaccinated?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Stavisky, members of the Senate Committee on Higher Education, staff and guests. I am Dr. Mohammed Atala, Vice Chancellor for Facilities Planning, Construction and Management at the City University of New York and the Executive Director of the City University Construction Fund. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify this morning. I wish to start by expressing my gratitude on behalf of the university for the capital funding provided by the state for the fiscal year 2022 and to the support of the state senate and this committee. For fiscal year 2022, the university received a total of $466 million in total funding from the state, including, among other categories, $284 million for capital infrastructure upgrades to CUNY's senior colleges, $100 million for new construction for CUNY's senior colleges, and $35 million as the state match to the city's capital funding for CUNY's community colleges. In addition, the university received reappropriations totaling over $3.1 billion. These funds are planned to be utilized for projects such as mechanical and heating ventilation upgrades, boiler and chiller replacements, fire alarms, roof replacements, health and ADA compliance, science labs renovations, science and technology equipment, capital expansions and improvement, community colleges' energy savings and improvement infrastructure projects. The design and engineering has been initiated for a number of these projects. In the past couple of years, we have completed numerous energy performance, capital infrastructure and new construction projects. Some projects that recently completed are the Baruch College Phase One renovations, the Lehman College Library renovations and the College of Technology Boiler-Chiller Replacement. Other recently completed projects include the lighting systems at both Kingsborough Community College and Borough of Manhattan Community College, centralization of the chiller plant at Queensborough Community College, heating and ventilation control systems upgrade at Queens College, laboratory upgrades at Brooklyn College, ADA renovations at Borough of Manhattan Community College, utility upgrades at Bronx Community College, generator upgrades at College of Staten Island and security system upgrade at Midgar-Ivers College. Those are only some examples of some of the completed projects. In addition, I am pleased to indicate that we have also accomplished a high level of compliance with our MWBE goal of 30%, which is 18% for MBEs and 12% for WBEs. Despite COVID-19, we were able to achieve MWBE utilization for 2020, for 2021 of 28.98%. And for the first quarter of FY '22, we have MW utilization of 35.69%. As we move forward, three major aspects would impact our strategy. First, COVID has changed the way we work and learn and our buildings need to be updated to reflect this fact. Also, Hurricane Ida further eliminated the need to prepare for harsh weather conditions generated by climate change. Energy conservation and sustainability mandate to reduce our greenhouse gases 40% by the year 2030 and contribute to 11 TBtu energy savings across state agencies. For example, at our community colleges, estimated cost to reduce greenhouse gases 40% by 2030 is about $262 million. I once again want to thank the state for its funding and the senate and this committee in particular for being a champion in its support for the university. I am very optimistic for the future of our university despite the challenges we have collectively faced from the pandemic. That concludes my testimony and I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Uh, yes, thank you. Earlier today, the President of the Professional Staff Congress, Dr. Davis, indicated that there were problems with the ventilation system at Hunter College and that has not been resolved. Can you, if, I don't mean to blindside you, but do you have any information on that? Or would you prefer to get back to both the Professional Staff Congress and our office?
We, I could get back on this particular front, but I, you know, I would like to, to add to this that our, our process, university process in dealing with the ventilation issues has been paramount. University administration have taken approaches and followed processes started in the early summer as the university was planning for reopening to ensure the safety of student, faculty and staff as paramount. So all the process, engaging the consultants, reviewing the buildings, ensuring that ventilation systems are compliant and issuing reports that to be made available to, to the university campuses as buildings are utilized.
So you will get back to us with the details of the status of the request of concerning the ventilation system at Hunter College? I, I did see photographs were sent to me at the start of the, of the semester.
Sure.
In your testimony on the second page, you talked about energy conservation and sustainability mandates. Have you taken a look at the emergency backup generators, et cetera? Because recently, on the Construction Fund agenda was an appropriation for emergency generators at a particular institution. Have you done an overall survey of the colleges to see what, how prepared they are?
That will be part of our process. We're now, we are in the planning of process of developing our energy management plan for both community colleges and for the senior, senior colleges. And that will be part of that mandate and for the development of the master energy management plan.
Because on item three, you say 10 million to purchase equi-, the appropriation that was approved was way over 10 million. I think that was the 13 million for one particular college, if my memory is correct?
Yeah, that, that's correct.
But how can you, if one college is gonna cost 13 million, how can you have 10 million for all, all of the CUNY institutions?
I am not sure I'm following 10 million for all CUNY institutions.
That's item, you had five points and this was point number three.
Purchase equipment. Yeah, well, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I wish to clarify that. What we're referring here in this item is emergency readiness to enhance the support to emergencies such as Ida. This is not responding to emergency generators that in case if we have recurrence of floods that causes flooding and backup sewer and trees falling during a hurricane. So the university is planning to develop an emergency response team in, in these cases to be able to deal with the water, drying water, dealing with the falling trees and to be able to help the university community.
Would, could this be covered under critical maintenance instead of? Could this be covered under critical maintenance?
Some of, some of the work could be included under critical maintenance, yes. But the idea of this item is to purchase additional equipment that is specifically designated to respond to, to those emergencies. But yes, some of it could be.
Because I'm concerned, obviously, that certain funding is approved in the state budget. And then, in reality, there are so many cost overruns or items that we didn't expect. And obviously, these things happen. We did have Hurricane Ida. But there are gonna be other hurricane, hurricanes with different names, but the same result. So I, that, that is an area that I have expressed concern over for some time that we've got to keep tabs on the cost of these items. Let me ask you a couple of other questions. There is a, a, an index called the Facility Condition Index, the FCI. Can you explain to us what it is? And secondly, what is the index that you need to maintain a building that is ready for, that is gonna be safe for everybody to use?
The FCI stands for the Facility Condition Index and it's an index that's used by organizations in North America and probably worldwide. And it's a very simple relationship between the, the cost that is needed to bring a building up to renewed condition divided by the replacement value of a building. And to, for example, if we have an existing building, in order to demolish the entire building and rebuild the building, that would cost $300 million, for example. And the building would need, in the same time, $100 million of investment to replace windows, roofs, boilers, HVAC components. So dividing the 100 million by the 300 million, that will give us 33%. So the FCI for this building will be 33%, which is the percentage between the investment needed to bring the building up to a current or a new condition divided by the full replacement value of the building.
Lastly, I noticed, I don't have it. Look, here it is. You have recommended an appropriation for Hunter College and their Health Sciences Building. That is an issue that has been important to President Rob and she and I spoke about it several months ago on a Zoom. Will that complete the work in addition to the funding that she has raised for the Health, for Hunter's Health Science Facility?
The, what we have included here is the, the three top, the three top priorities from a capital priority, three buildings that are considered to be the capital priority for the university. And number three on the list is Hunter College Building. And yes, the, the number that we've included there as a priority, that building needs about $275 million to, that in order to complete the, the core, the, the shell of the building.
In other words, it.
The full va-, I, I.
Do you know what the whole, the entire cost is going to be? If this is Phase One, that's a.
Yeah, that, that is Phase One. The entire building would, the latest estimate would cost around between 800 to 900 million, the, the full building. That will be like the, the rough estimate for the total cost for that building.
For the record, I went to graduate school at Hunter as well as Queens College.
Excellent.
And it's a big hole in the ground and its proximity to Sloan-Kettering makes it a really important part of the healthcare network and.
Yes.
My, I, 800 to 900 million. Does that include the large sum of money that the, the President of Hunter College has raised?
I am sorry, Senator Stavisky, I, I'm not sure about the number that was raised. I, I'm not sure how much was raised.
I, I appreciate it. You're relatively new to New York and you've done a remarkable job and so.
Thank you.
Up to this point in learning and, and acting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, thank you very much, Doctor. Just getting back to the climate goals. You know, you point out that to meet the 40% of reduction in greenhouse gases, it would cost 262 million for 2030. With the projects, some of them that you have described and other projects that are ongoing, are you already implementing some climate change infrastructure goals as you spend existing capital funds?
Yes, this is part of our strategies as, as indicated. So the projects, whether we have expansions, additions or, or new buildings, we make sure that we employ the newest technologies in energy saving, energy conservation and build buildings or, as we say, green buildings. In addition to that, our critical maintenance aspects, when we speak about boiler replacement, window replacement, roof replacements, all of those components, when we replace them, we choose and select and specify high efficiency boiler, high efficiency equipment that will contribute to the reduction of the greenhouse gases of the campus.
So how, how much of your system is relying on oil or rely on gas, do you know?
I, I don't have that number.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe you could provide that because, you know, we're looking at this from a, you know, across the board for not only government, but, you know, homes and business, private businesses as, as well. And it's a major undertaking and it's, it's gonna take a while, but it's also gonna take a lot of money.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Will you get back to Senator Goran on that?
Yes, I took a note for that, yes.
Thank you. Senator Lou.
Yeah, just a quick question. Where does the Murphy Institute stand, the School of Labor Law?
It stands.
So they, they were in current space at, on 43rd Street? 2543rd or 44th Street?
Correct.
Are they still in there? Because there was some talk about moving them to their own facilities. And then last year during the budget hearings, we were told, I think by the Chancellor, that, well, you're trying to renegotiate their space at the current location.
Yes, the School of Labor, we are negotiating their current space plus also we have negotiated and acquired an addition in the building, like to acquire additional space within the same building and we have negotiated the lease.
For that same school?
For that same school, yes. And we, there will be some leasehold improvements in the same building and the floor plate that was acquired to be added to the, to the school space.
And that will be enough to meet their expansion needs?
We believe in the current, it will meet the current need for expansion and increased enrollment.
Do they believe that?
I believe they believe that.
Okay, then I believe that he believes that they believe that, Madam Chair.
I remember the issue very well. They wanted additional space in their current building. Has that been approved?
Exactly, and this is what our team is working on right now. We have negotiated with the, with the landlord, we have acquired the space and we have, we are in the plans of renovating the space to suit the school needs.
Good. And when do you expect that contract to be signed?
I, I believe we, the, the contract will be signed within a month, if I'm not mistaken. If I remember correctly, we are planning to bring that to the board in December and to have the student in the new space for the fall of 2022.
That would be December 2021? The board meeting. You said you'll bring it to the board in December 2021?
If I remember correctly, yes.
No, you said, you said December. I just wanted to make sure you mean December 2021.
Yes, that's correct.
The CUNY Construction Fund? Because they have a board meeting for December 16th, I believe. It's a different board?
Yeah, we, we bring items to the CUNY Board and to the CCUF Board as well.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Well, we thank you very much. We thank all of the people who came to testify. It is now 12:58 and the meeting, the hearing is adjourned. It will be continued Wednesday. See you at Stony Brook.